That's right, nobody else.
Yeah, there you go.
Good afternoon.[3.75][3.75](laughter) Hey. Thank you. Good afternoon to everyone on the web. We are broadcasting this, so if you have a question, we've got microphones. Please wait till we get it to you so that they can hear you too. And that way, I don't have to remember your question the whole way through and so I can repeat it. So, we have a few things to go over today, kind of where the status is of Cornerstone, along with a couple of other projects and things going on. We'll spend most of the time on Cornerstone. And address questions and also where are we progressing with all the various activities that we have going on. You know, this is a -- I've been coming here enough times to talk about that. This is a big project, and it's a multi-year. This being the first major stage of it is bringing in the financial system and the procurement systems. And we had the added complication, of course, of merging two universities while we were doing it, two university systems, which just made it doubly difficult. But, you know, these -- this is the groundwork, and it's the movement as we modernize the systems and really get into best practices out there. But the consequence of that is changing everybody's world while we do it. And also, waiting for some of the things that are in these products to get aligned with how we really do business or should be doing business. So there's some immaturity in the products that, you know, that has been difficult. So, this was the beginning. We still are going to be coming to HR and payroll, and I'll talk about that a little bit. We've done procurement expense management, and soon we'll be talking about how we might reform the student information systems, too. That's kind of on the tail end because we have a lot of work to do on processes and activities around student services. You know, our -- it may not feel like it at the moment, but, you know, our number one priority is that when this is really stable and we've got everybody comfortable with it, to really have improved how we do business here. Now, you know, it may not feel that way now, as I say, but that is the direction we're going to be. We could not sustain the two systems we were using. They were based on not such good practices. They weren't consistent with one another, and also, they weren't supportable in the long term. They also had hundreds of customizations, which made it difficult any time an upgrade would be available to us, that we could never take advantage of it without doing a whole nother implementation. So, moving into the cloud-based systems allows us to get to a place that is tracking against better practices, although some of these are still immature. We're working directly with Oracle on those. But, we will get to that point, but it's not there yet by any means. It will take a while to take advantage of these things, to really learn it, to work with them, to tune it up, and to see which of the assumptions that we made really panned out well. You know, not all of them will. Some of them will -- we've already looked at changes we might make to the chart of accounts to simplify things or things that we thought would work, and mostly did, but some are not the best way they could be. But at the end of the day, we need, you know, modern systems, we need transparency in what we do, access to the data, and good tools and processes to get work done. And everybody's engagement and participation and patience has been really, really critical in all this. So, we're going to go over stabilizing the system, ongoing activities, and then talk about some of the financial planning, budgeting milestones, things coming up in that area, so that we can talk about something else other than Cornerstone for a few minutes. So, as I said, these are the reasons why, you know, we are going to this, in addition to merging two universities. So, can't say that enough. That is something that no one's ever done to the size that we have done. And I think that after we demonstrate how complicated it is, no one will ever try it again.[276.81][276.81](laughter) I use that when I talk to other schools, you know.[281.83][281.83](laughter) We'll see. So, again, I want to just take a minute to thank you, to thank the people on the web who are watching this. I know this has been painful, and I know it's still painful. There are things that you cannot know how to do yet, the way that you used to. You know, I equate this to somebody taking, you know, somebody's job and you're expert at it, and all of a sudden saying, "Okay, we're going to completely change it this way, and you've got to become expert again." And I wish we didn't have to do that, but that is one of the consequences of having to switch systems. But, you know, I would say that when everybody is comfortable and up to speed, you'll have that feeling of expertness again. But we'll also work on making it work the way it should, and getting you the reports that you need. You know, again, the things that we could anticipate, we tried to anticipate, and things, some other things just cascaded in and were not expected. So, your partnership, your patience, and your continued engagement, you know, is really, really what is going to make this successful in the long run. So I want to thank you for that. Let's talk about where we are in stabilizing the system. Probably, last time I was here, procurement may have been the biggest set of issues because of the backlog that we had in terms of invoice payments. Just as a reminder, that came from the conversion of 42,000 purchase orders from the two systems and the problems that that had in terms of backlogging invoice payments and just really getting into, you know, just behind the wall. We get -- we've been getting 1,200, 1,500 invoices a day lately.
Almost 2,000.
Almost 2,000. It's ridiculous. We -- I think we were tracking earlier this year, you know, 900 or so a year, and it's really popped up. And that's a lot of things. It doesn't take much of a delay to get you behind. And then, we also had the system issues of converted POs. But, we're pretty much business as usual now. We've gotten all but a handful of invoices paid, and those are ones that, some of which are duplicates, and some of which just came from bad POs from the old systems. And we have a mechanism to push those through, probably, well, before we close the books in March. So this is really, I think, behind us. There may still be a few incidental issues around, and I have my good friends from Procurement Services here to address any that you might have, either on the procurement side or the payment side. And, but I think we're in a position where this is pretty much working the way it's supposed to. There, we actually will now take a step back and say, "Let's get out of this rush mode." And it was. We had people in every single day of the week, entering the holidays, just crunching through invoices so as to catch up. It was a heroic effort. But now, we take a step back and say, "Okay, now what should the process really be? We have it here. We had an idea of what we were going to do. We had to go into emergency mode to get over the hump. And now, take a step back and take a look and work with the community and say, 'How should it really work going forward?'" So, those are the things that we're going to be seeing out of procurement over the next few months, along with year-end processes. And there'll be communications out very shortly in terms of advising on how to handle that, how it's different from the way that you handled it before, either in RIOS or in Banner, and what to do to prepare for the next fiscal year. So, I wanted to take a step -- stop there, just to see if there are any particular questions or issues around procurement before we go on.
Um, I was just wondering, could we get an explanation on why some of our preparers have been asked to use quantity and price interchangeably?
David.
For example, excuse me, for example, if someone was procuring something for $5,000, they were instructed to put $5,000 for the quantity and a dollar for the unit price.
The reason why the quantity is important, if the quantity is more than one, it enables us to invoice multiple times against that purchase order. So generally speaking, that is, that's how you set up a blanket order. I'd have to ask the specific circumstances of that PO. In general, you cannot use a quick order to set up a blanket order. So if your department is looking to set up a blanket order, you should, as by policy, you shouldn't be using the quick order, which wouldn't allow that, or the goods order for that matter. So you should be using the service request form, which automatically sets up the PO in the manner with a multiple quantity. But in some cases, orders that were converted over or orders that were set up in haste originally need to be flipped or set up in a different manner to allow us to get through the invoice emergency that Mike was talking about. So that enables us, we might ask you to flip or set something up in a different manner, so that might be a reason why. The key is, if you're going to invoice multiple times, the quantity needs to be set up more than one.
So, in business as usual going forward, this shouldn't be?
Business as usual going forward, the key question, and any of you who took the training that we did last summer in advance of Go Live, when you're determining which form to use, if you think you're going to be setting up a blanket order, meaning that you're going to be ordering multiple times off the same PO, the only form to use in RU Marketplace for that is the service request form, because you're setting up a dollar-based type of purchase order, and then drawing down from that. Otherwise, you're using the quick order form or the goods request form to purchase, to make one purchase. You could order multiple things, but it's one buy, and therefore, we expect only one invoice, or even if it's more than one invoice, it's specifically matched to that particular PO.
Does that help? Okay. I mean, you can, if you want to connect.
Yeah, if you want to give me the specifics, I don't know, yeah, as to why you were advised that particular instance, I could look into that for you.
Yeah, that would be great, if we could. Oh, good. Thanks.
The biggest issue I have right now with purchasing is that any, we have a couple new grants, we just got account numbers, well, we got account numbers for them like two months ago.
Okay.
We still can't charge anything to them.
They're brand-new ones?
They're brand-new. I mean, we got the numbers, one we got about three weeks ago, and the other one we got about a month and a half ago.
Huh.
The project's not set up, right?
Okay, that, okay.
Yeah, it's been set up, Grant's accounting looked into it.
All right, can we get the, can we get the numbers from you? Because we'll, I want to track that. That, if they, we had, I'll get this in a minute, we have some issues with grants that were at or near or going past end dates in the system, but a new one wouldn't, that wouldn't apply to.
Yeah, the new one should be set up.
Yeah, it doesn't end until June 30th, which is coming up, but.
Okay.
I can get you those numbers.
If we can get the numbers, we can take a look at it, or if you have them, can access them before we're done, we can get that. That sounds.
Is there a budget?
Yeah, do you have a budget set up in that grant? You have a budget, regular budget set up in it?
Um.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, so if you can give us, we can look it up.
I had a quick question about our beloved Amazon account, and when we should expect that that will be paid up and ready to go so that we can use it again, because it's our favorite.[812.66][812.66](laughter)
Our beloved Amazon.
Love it, Amazon account.
I have one of those, but it doesn't get charged here.
Yeah, we're working through many of the past due invoices, Amazon being one of them. Amazon, bottled water, these are the, kind of the pain points. These are the vendors that unfortunately, their relatively low-dollar invoices that have caused problems, and they don't take yes for an answer. We've paid Amazon a ton of money, but unfortunately, the way that, there's a complicating factor with that. The short answer is, we're paying them as quickly as possible, trying to get through the invoices. Some departments are able to order from Amazon, others have not, only because we've not been able to get to them. We're getting through the Amazon invoices, just like we're getting through any others. Have you put in emergency requests for Amazon, or have you done anything?
Figured other things out, but it's still my favorite.
It's still your favorite.[875.12][875.12](laughter)
Just to add, and if you could further explain this, I think the issue that we're having with Amazon is payments are going up, and I'm sure you guys are sending multiple checks that take care of different accounts across campus.
Right.
But when we contact Amazon specifically for our account or for orders that we place that get denied, they're saying that, you know, there's one specific invoice that's holding things up where payment is not clearing or, I guess, reconciling to several payments. And this is through Synchrony Bank when we talked to them.
Yeah, and just so everybody understands, when we pay Amazon, that's a different supplier than anybody else. It's, they don't accept our purchase order directly like 99% of the other suppliers we work with. The PO acts essentially as a payment vehicle for us, but you, every department that buys from Amazon has to register with Amazon to get an account, like, and then the PO funds that, because that's the only way that we can obviously charge back the department. So it's complicated to begin with before any of this started. We need to, once we get past all of this, we're going to go through a process, and we've made contacts, and we have people in our office who are working with Amazon to set up a different way to procure goods and services through Amazon down the road, but we obviously have to get past this first. One of the problems is they, they're accepting payments, and then they're not necessarily charging the right accounts. I've heard some of that. So, it's one thing to, we owe Amazon X amount of dollars as a university, but that doesn't solve your department's issue. So, we're trying to get through that as quickly as possible. If you want to send something directly to me, we've been working directly with Amazon. Admittedly, I've not been engaged directly with certain departments on Amazon. We've been working with that synchronicity bank, but if you want to send information to me directly as to what your specific problem is, I'll get in touch with the person who's working with Amazon in my department, and we'll try to resolve your department issue specifically. Okay?
This really has brought up some weird issues. I mean, we found out through this process, one, how many Amazon accounts we have, hundreds, how many water accounts we have, how many FedEx accounts we have, UPS accounts, Verizon accounts, all of these. And each of these vendors, we're going to go back to and say, you know, we need a master account set up. We need some way to be able to say, we've got, like we do with Office Depot, you know, we've got one bill, and then get the data to distribute it out, because it's insane. And it isn't, it isn't good for them either.
No, they want to get paid.
It's very inefficient and expensive for them to be billing 100, 100 different times. So if you could leave, give David our, the details there, we'll track on that.
Okay, I have another question. Sorry, I love money.
Please.
So, is there a list of, and maybe you all have this, it just came to me, is there a list of companies that we still owe money to that we are reaching out and doing customer service with, especially those smaller companies? So, we did an order for paper covers, and it doesn't seem that much craziness, but we use them every single day in the operations of the campus center, and they were like, "Sorry, no, you're not getting your order because we haven't been paid." So, it's been taken care of, but if we could be proactive in that, is there a listing of those people?
I don't think we have a list per se of who we specifically owe money to. We set up a vendor hotline a couple months ago specifically for suppliers, so if they have particular issues, they can work with that. So we have, effectively have two different avenues to resolve payment issues. So if payments are past due, end users are to use the side quest form to resolve emergency payments, and suppliers are to use the RU suppliers website or the vendor hotline. That's how they can get their payment issues rectified. But, as Mike mentioned earlier, in fact, I, just as I sat down, I got a text that many of the lingering issues, we're actually uploading the payments on many of those past due issues right now as we speak. Mark Kasepe texted me on that. So, whether your paper company is one of the companies that's being resolved, I can't speak to that. But if you have a query, if you have a question about a particular supplier, you can reach out to us. But what we need is the information about a particular invoice in order for us to look into that. Now, remember, many of the payment issues were caused by integration problems post October 3rd. But then, things were exacerbated because invoices were just not properly presented to accounts payable. And what I mean by that is, and that is something that continues to this day, invoices are attached to purchase orders, and departments think that that's sufficient. That is not going to get your bill paid. You need to make sure that suppliers send invoices to accounts payable, accountspayable@finance.ruckers.edu, and that those invoices are sent to that email address with a valid purchase order on the face of that invoice. If that happens, we are.
Purchase order number.
With a purchase order number, excuse me. Right.
Just to clarify.
We're working at 99% success rate right now. So, the integration problems that plagued us in October, November, and December are no longer an issue. So, the things that are continuing to haunt us, if you're having payment issues, is because those invoices just aren't being sent to AP. So my friend Gary and his staff, when they come, when they come to him, we're able to pay. If it hasn't been paid, it's because it's just not getting to his desk.
Yeah, we're having to chase down, there's never been a PO in the new system, we've got to go to the old systems.
Right.
Never have a PO in the old system invoice comes across. There's a lot of detective work in these last ones.
Which, yeah.
And, I mean, we've been, we've gotten through probably 50,000 invoices, probably more than that.
Oh, yeah.
In the slog.
Yeah.
And we're down to the last, last set of these, that were just the ones that had no charge accounts, no, it was just junk. But there's still invoices that may need to be paid, so we got to push through, push them through and see what happens to them. I want to get past this so we can get into, you know, regular business. But we do, we need to go out to our vendors again and say, "Put that purchase order number on there, or we can't do anything." Wait a minute. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add to Chrissy's point. We service the area of the campus center, and we keep a log of all the invoices that, well, all the POs that we generate, but then we keep a log of when we send the invoices and when we send them again.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I have a list of things that are sent from maybe October, ranging from, yeah, that date to today's date. And we have things that were sent to February that we had to send again in March, that we sent again in April. So I don't, I know that you guys are doing a tremendous job of kind of cleaning up that backlog, but I am concerned with things going to accounts payable, and we're not getting any communication as far as, you know, when is this item going to be paid? And I'm not even asking for the communication, but we have to constantly run reports and queries to show that invoices aren't matched to POs, and we have to do that on a weekly basis just to, you know, get answers to our vendors. So I think her question is, is there any way in RU Marketplace that we can, you know, get a report that generated, or we just have to continue to use the matched and not-matched system?
Well, once, once an invoice shows up in RU Marketplace, it's been processed by the AP staff. So at that point, it's on its way to being paid unless there's an issue with a match exception or some other problem that needs to be resolved. And again, that speaks to the 99%. So if it's in the 1% where there's a problem, we work through that type of thing every day. So if it's not in RU Marketplace, it's either pending and it's waiting to be processed. And the reason for that is just, it's in our backlog and we just haven't gotten to it yet. What I could say is, we work through this, and I personally work through this every single day. So what I mean by that is, if you ask me about a particular invoice, I could tell you, if I go look at my report, whether or not it's in the queue, and it's either in RU Marketplace, or it's in Oracle, it's been paid, or it's in Image Now, which is essentially in the scanning system waiting to be processed. If it's not there, it hasn't been properly presented to AP. Now, you may say that you sent it to AP, and I don't doubt that, it just, there's been some disconnect as to why it hasn't gotten to that point yet. So the key for us is really, we've had different processes going back to the legacy Rutgers side, the RBHS side, as to, we want to move everything toward streamlining it and making sure that everything goes into that, into that same process. So if you have a log, if you guys down here in Camden keep track of everything that you've submitted, and you're not seeing it show up in RU Marketplace after a reasonable period of time, and we can debate what's a reasonable period of time, let me know. Give me the list of what those invoices are, and I can find out what, why there's a lag time and why that stuff is not showing up.
And it would be good, you know, since you have that log, and that's helpful. Let's go ahead and get, get that to us, and that we can troubleshoot it. Part of what I'm saying about getting into business as usual is, you know, we're still kind of on a high-tension mode, until we get these last things through the door. So, we need to, in fact, take a moment back and say, "All right, now, going forward, let's just make sure all of our vendors know what to do, and all of our customers and the departments know what to do," and so that we won't, we get out of emergency mode and get into something more normal. But until we do that, there's still things that are going to slip.
Yeah, I mean, there is.
So if you will share that, please do, and we'll.
Yeah, absolutely. Do things get missed? I'm sure that there might be something that gets missed. And there is some time, given the volume, and Mike spoke to it earlier. We're scanning, lately, we've been scanning 1,500 to 2,000 invoices a day into the system, and we're getting more emails than that in. So that ends up giving us a little bit of a new backlog that we just have to get through. So if you sent it in, it may just not have gotten to that point yet. Just if I could just say one other thing, talking about the year end, and this will be in that communication, but just since I have a chance to speak to everybody directly.
Good talk, David.
The POs that converted from the legacy system, so old Banner POs, old RIOS POs that did in fact convert to RU Marketplace, please be reminded, they will be closed June 30th. So if you have one in the new system and it's working, that's great, but please be prepared to put in a request for a new PO if you still want to use that, whatever it is that you're buying off of that, starting July 1st. So you can get those requisitions in at any time, but just be aware that after June 30th, they're not going to be good anymore, so be ready to get a successor PO in place for those POs.
And don't wait. You can do it right now.
Avoid the rush.
You can do it, you can do it right, exactly. You can do it for the Christmas rusher. Right now, and then just reference the one that's being closed, and it'll get done.
That's right.
And we're having, you know, those are the, the new things are having the 99% success rate. We're still hitting the conversion thing.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am. Wait, let me get, let me get a mic to you. Thanks.
So I have two vendors that have received double payment.
Okay.
So what they're doing now is balancing out their new invoices to zero. Should I be doing something else?
Be alert procurement or alert accounts payable. We have a process to deal with double payments. You know, in the rush to try to fix things, you know, we would put out an emergency payment, then the invoice went ahead and got processed, you know, and not matched. So that happened. There's no question. And in fact, you know, it can happen occasionally anyway. Yes, Gary?
I want to recommend balancing out against other invoices.
No, that's not a good thing.[1666.12][1666.12](laughter)
The two, the best one is for them to send us a refund check or to set up a credit memo. The reason I don't like the balancing out is potentially, they could submit that invoice accidentally, and we're going to pay it again, even though they credited out due to an overpayment. So I kind of discourage.
So they, when they do the invoice, it's balanced out to zero.
Right.
So it's not, it's nothing, I can't submit it for payment because it's zero.
But they, potentially, they might submit it for payment, and since we don't have that invoice number on file, it could potentially get paid again. I realize you say they're zeroing it out, but.
Right, right.
Somehow it gets mailed out, and it had the original amount on it, it's going to get paid again.
Okay, so what's your?
Oh, and we also don't have the record that that PO's been paid through and expensed through, and it could be carrying the balance.
So what's the process? I should talk to you later.
Sure, but the number-one process is ask the vendors send us a refund check, and I can give you that information.
Okay.
Or secondary is to, for them to set up an official credit memo referencing the PO number and the invoice we double paid, then we can scan that credit memo in.
Okay.
And that credit will go back on your PO. You'll get the funding put back on your PO.
Okay, okay.
I'll talk to you later.
Talk to you later.
And then the commitment will get, the encumbrance will get fixed in that respect. That's the other problem with just what they're doing. That doesn't happen. Can you, this is, okay. Others for procurement, yes, here. The mics are for the folks on the web.
Thank you.
And we're recording this.
Can I just ask some of the New Brunswick folks to introduce themselves before they speak? Because I feel like we've been emailing you all the time, and now we're going to meet you in person.
I have an army here. Let's go around with them and just pass the mic.
Hi, I'm Tom Duchan. I'm the project manager for financials.
I'm David Finkel, senior category manager from procurement.
And I'm Mike Dunn. I'm a category manager for procurement, and I work with Chris Aha as well, so.
Hi, I'm Ian Gatzick. I'm the manager of travel.
Hi, my name's Linda Jordan. I'm change.
Hi, my name's Linda Jordan. I'm change management lead. I came aboard a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, so we can't blame her for anything yet. She's in a good position right now.
Seppi Sapasi, AVP for strategic initiatives, co-lead on the various projects.
Thanks, Seppi. Ernie DeSandro, I'm with the finance office.
I'm Allison Shaw, representing GCA.
And, where'd Gary go?
Gary Cusson, RBHS, accounts payable.
Well, now, everybody accounts payable.
Oh, yeah.
And then we have-
And Stephanie Re, communications.
So when you get all the great communications, that's Stephanie. Other questions on procurement? Okay, let's move on to the financial systems. And in particular, here, we're resolving variances in the sub ledger. Now, that needs translation, I think, for most individuals around here. What does that mean? So unlike the old financial systems, we have a, what's called a sub ledger for projects. And projects consist of grants and contracts, and they may consist of what we call non-sponsored projects, which are really any other types of things, like a capital project, like a discretionary fund or a startup fund. It could be, I think we have endowment spending accounts in those. So something that is not a grant or contract, not a research activity or something similar to that. So that sub ledger is where the transactions for those grants and those projects take place. When you put through an expense, you put through revenue, they go to there. And then, on a regular basis, they summarize the information and pass it to the general ledger. And the general ledger is where we would normally do all of our higher-level reporting, you know, where we, with particular activities, in particular units, and so on. So through the winter, we started to see issues in regards to the communication, if you will, between the sub ledger and the ledger, the general ledger. So certain things were not flowing to the right places. Certain things were not posting to the right places. Those were then complicating reporting, because it would appear in one place in the sub ledger and then appear in a different place in the general ledger. So that's not a good thing, obviously. But that has been, that has been really a complication, especially for areas that are research-intensive. So this has required a lot of sleuthing, a lot of work to dig in and say, "Well, what isn't working the way it was designed to?" And it wasn't because, I mean, we designed 50 different rules to go from the sub ledger to the general ledger for various circumstances. And what we found out of this process was that 11 of those were not working the way we expected them to. Now, you know, why didn't we find that in testing? Well, you can test and test and test, but until you hit a system with the real traffic, the real size transaction, some of these things don't show up. And also, every lab, every activity out there has a different set of needs or a different set of requirements. And until you see them use it, and it's not working the right way, sometimes they don't show up. So that's not an excuse, it's just a reason. So these are things that have been a real problem. Most of these 11 have been fixed going forward. I think all but, all but two. There was a communication on the 28th that gave a list of these things, and I think, are they in here? I'll go through these in a minute for the different variances. But now what we're doing is going back to seeing where those transactions hit between the time we went live and the time they were fixed, and fixing those transactions. Now, let me say again, they're hitting the right place in the sub ledger. If you're looking directly at the grants through the project module, you're seeing them hit the right places. It's when they summarize up to the general ledger that it's not necessarily hitting the right place. And as I said, I'll go through in a minute all the, some of the specifics there. So that's a very complicated piece. So what we have done is several steps. One is work on those 11 rules. Two is look at the transactions that have taken place and create the journal vouchers that will put those things in the right place, from the time that we went live to the time that the fix was put in place, and then reconcile to that. So the problem with communicating to the general ledger is that the reports that you would normally use were running off the general ledger. And those things were coming up with incorrect balances or incorrect data. They were pulling it from the wrong place and putting it together wrong. So in the interim, until we get all those pieces fixed, there were some queries that were created. These particular queries, the OTBI queries, will allow you to dig in directly into the grants ledger or the project ledger and be able to see the transactions and pull them into a report. It is not the prettiest thing in the world, and it's certainly not the thing that we want you to use going forward, but it works for the moment while we get these other things done and then stabilize the reporting. I think that it's important that you be able to get the access to those, and even though it's more work than I'd like it to be, because you've got to take one from here and one from there and put it into a spreadsheet to deal with it, it is, it works. And we're really, really focusing on getting the other pieces cleaned up. This has been a real pain, you know, and it's been worse for you, I know, if you've involved in these things. And it has caused great difficulty across the university. And, you know, we thought when we were having payment issues that that was the worst we could have, and then we ran into this. We have the added complication that if your grants were transferred from Banner, anybody here have any of those? I don't think you would have but a handful, if any. You know, only the, yeah, there are only a handful of people in that system here. If we were coming across from that, and somebody on the web may have that, then there were problems in the conversion of the beginning balances. And that's something that we've got a team working on right now to give us a report on Thursday? Can't wait. To see what other corrections that are necessary to get those things in the right place. So that has caused the greater difficulty. We've got ones coming from there that the balances that you have may be off. Not by much, but could be off by some. And then we're trying to reconcile everything else along the way. So there's an intensive process between Oracle, Lloyd, Huron, and Ernst &amp; Young to tie down all of these things. One, so that they can be working for the community the way they're supposed to, and two, that we can get everything ready for year end, because that's coming up quickly with us. So what are some of these pieces? So here are some actions that are going on through the controller's office, UCO, and grant and contract accounting. Invoices not posting to the general ledger. So that's coming from the procurement piece. As David indicated, the last of the nagging list of ones that had collected and hadn't been posted or hadn't been tracked through, we hope to run this today and then get them into the system before the March 17 close. The only thing that should be left are the cats and dogs and the things in the normal queue. Data converted incorrectly, so that is the one I referred to before. This is dealing, I think, just with Banner. Yeah, so no real financial impact from the RIAS conversion, but this is from the Banner conversion that we have some of those. And again, we're getting that to go. The third one is what we face almost every year, and that is a change in the fringe benefit rate by the state, where it comes in, you know, after our fiscal year is in place, and we have to go back and update that. So we're getting the fun of updating that en masse in the new system, but also taking the data that came before we merged the two, before we merged the folks who were being paid on Banner HR into PeopleSoft. So it has the added complication. It's not just the normal that you've experienced before that PeopleSoft can update this thing and post it, because we have to bring in all the activity that happened from July 1 to October, whenever, that happened for the folks who were being paid by Banner. So that's why that is more complicated than it would be in a regular year. And that's something that going forward, won't be a complicating factor, only insofar as the state not getting it to us in time. Payroll transactions dated after grant end date. So there was another conversion issues with a lot of grants, again, primarily Banner converted grants, where the end dates did not convert correctly for the grant. And the systems are set up so that when you pass the end date, it shuts off transactions. So if they were not in the right end dates, they could be shutting down transactions. And that's the grant, the real grant end date plus 90 days, you know, which is the time allowed for adjusting entries. So this is a, an effort that we've engaged Oracle to help us with directly, to go in and do a data fix, they call it, a mass update of those end dates. I don't know how much that will impact here, but in other areas that would be, in particular in RBHS, will be significant. And what it's doing is having the effect of shutting down posting of payroll in particular, but any kinds of other transactions too. We're still collecting the transactions, but they're not posting to it. So that is something that we expect to have done this week. You got a communication some time ago about changing payroll distributions. That really wasn't a different process than what you would have used before for everyone here. If you haven't gone through and made sure that your payrolls are posted in the right place, please do, so we can get them all processed appropriately. Indirect costs, this applies to the responsibility centers, the colleges, or the schools in particular, where the FNA would be hitting the grant, but the credit wouldn't show up in the school. It was going to a central fund, and now it's being remapped to the appropriate school. So as a result of the RCM model, we've got, that'll be remapped. And then, last but not least, we have case, no, not last, last on this list. We have case where we're showing up with duplicate requisitions or duplicate commitments for things that have been paid. That's going to get fixed. I don't, do you know the derivation of that? Oh, Mike? You can explain it better than I can.
When the purchase order comes through, it's meant to replace the requisition. And that broke right at the beginning of the year. So, yeah. So since January, I think it was January through beginning of April, you'll see requisitions coming through and not being replaced by the purchase order, therefore duplicating. We're going to delete all the requisitions. That's in testing right now. We're about a week away from getting them all cleared out.
Okay. So the requisition was encumbering the funds, should have been replaced by the encumbrance from the purchase order. Instead, it got duplicated. They both, they both, they both hit there. Okay. Thank you. I knew you knew that better than I did. Questions on these points? There's a lot of complicated stuff here, so I want to take the time and I've got the people here to help me.
Can you just confirm that one of the 11 rule changes has to do with the burden cost clearing and the fringe benefit suspense? Currently, in some, not all project counts, the-
Yes.
Okay. Right now, on some projects, the burden cost clearing is being mapped and rolled up to the GL. Instead of using the proper natural account, it's going to fringe benefit suspense. And right now, I can see it's being taken care of manually.
Yeah.
So I just, it will be-
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is the second one?
I have a question about SWRJs.
Okay.
It was the same thing. It was the same issue. And then I have a question about SWRJs. I don't know if, so I guess the process, I think, as we know, is staying the same, where we just complete the form. However, we have to provide the GL account string. Since, I guess, the beginning of the conversion, some of the projects have, or some of the sponsored projects have been mapped incorrectly, and there have been several GL account strings associated to one project as it was being corrected. When we go to complete the form, what GL account string do we use when we're asking to move the funding? Is it the one that hit the GL? Understand what I mean?
Yeah, it should be, it should be to the last one, or the one that it should be going to.
So if we have a, we have one group that had one project number that was, hit two different, three different GL strings?
Different GLs?
So what I have, we have to complete multiple SWRJs for the time periods that it hit?
Can we get that, and let me, let's take that back to GCA Central and get you a specific answer on that.
Okay.
And then we'll post the answer to the website, so that, since this is, you're not the only one, I'm sure, that this has happened to. So let us research that, get you the specific answer, and then we'll post the general answer.
And then I have a behind-the-scenes question for the SWRJ.
So that's, this is one, this is one of the questions we want to then get posted to the website when we follow up on it.
When the SWRJ is sent to GCA, and then I, can you confirm if it's then sent to payroll for changes? To make the changes? Okay, so my other concern was through all this, we've been working with Jeremy Hallet to get new combo codes created. So I didn't know if that would have to happen as well. Like, so we were instructed that if we sent up an SWRJ and it wasn't accepted in the payroll system, it would just get rejected without us knowing really why it was rejected. And then we'd try to fix it and go back to the bottom of the pile to get reviewed. So I was just wondering if there is something that we need to work with Jeremy on to set up new combo codes for the GL strings that they're supposed to go to.
Yeah, let me get the mic.
And I think for those cases, well, if you can send it to, copy Jeremy, but send it to Nizam in GCA, he should be able to track through where it got stuck. Similar to the end date issue, there is also a date in the payroll system that may be stopping those from processing, so he can go through and validate if it was a date issue or where it got stuck.
Other questions? This is immense. So it is something that, again, I want to thank everybody for your patience, engagement in this. The most important thing is that if you're hitting a problem, is to let us know, because some of these things we only found out about because somebody finally raised their hand and said, "Hey, do you know this is not hitting the right place?" And we had no idea because you- right place? And we had no idea, because you can't, I mean, there's, what do we figure out? 250,000 transactions a month? Yeah, go through this system. So until somebody says, okay, this one's, you know, what's encouraging is everybody is now really reconciling or going back to it, which, you know, was hard to do at the beginning. But I'm grateful now, because then that's popping up issues and questions. We have a hard stop at 3:30? Does that mean I should talk faster? Okay. So, by the way, all these slides will be available on finance.ruckers.edu tomorrow, today, later today. So you can get these tables, and we have contact information in here, too. And by the way, anybody who is on the web that has a question, you can send it to cornerstone@ruckers.edu, is that right? Cornerstone@ruckers.edu, and Stephanie will watch the email and pick it up. Yes, Mike?
I just had a general question about sub-ledgers versus the GL.
Yes.
For strings that are predominantly project-related, grants, endowments, can you process at the GL level without a project number? It's a yes? Okay. I just wanted to know, when we're talking to the business managers about reconciliation, that that's an issue.
If there's a combination, that's, it's usually used by GCA and grants. As long as it's valid, you can book journal entries to, at the GL level.
I was going to test it, but I thought I'd better ask.
Yeah, go for it. So just as an aside, we are looking, besides grants and contracts, which obviously need to be in the project module, we're going to take, we're taking a step back and make sure that all the things that we put in there, that's the best thing to do with them. Because some of them, I think we may have put too much in there. And so we have some help from Team at Huron to look at the chart and see if we can make that a little easier. So there are actions that individual units can take. Again, this is important for you to keep looking at the data that comes through, reconciling, making sure that it makes sense, making sure that if there are any things that need to get updated, we can fix them, work with you to fix them. I'll note in particular around expense reports, where we've had some issues with incorrect default chart strings, you know, and then those reverberate through, continue, because they get kind of locked in there. So if it's already been submitted, you can use a regular journal entry on that or a project cost transaction. And otherwise, please make sure that the defaults in those expense setups for individuals that you're running expenses for are still correct. Conversion data, I talked about, the biggest thing there was, is on the grant balances coming in. If you see other things, please let us know. If something has, doesn't seem to have converted correctly in an opening balance, please let us know. Again, we won't be able to fix it until we know that it's there. Although we are going through, we're going through one by one by one through the audit readiness process, just to make sure. But it's much better the way around. There's some details on internal purchase orders. We're going to be rethinking the process and how this whole thing works for the next fiscal year, but we do have the workaround to get it to go now. And then the change in source of funds, we talked about before. The biggest thing being, if there are conversion issues that pop up, please let us know about them. Some important questions around guidance coming up. March close is scheduled for the 24th at 2:00 p.m. We did this so as to make sure to get all the fringe changes in. This will be for March 31. That's a really important thing, to catch up all the accounts. And we went, we got an extraordinary increase from the state on fringes this time, and so it's something that we must get caught up on. And then, just as with procurement, we're going through the process now of what is the year-end guidance to you in terms of the steps that are necessary for us to have a good close at the end. Again, we're also, we've got a team in that's helping to make sure that everything is lined up, so as to be able to do the best we can. We are not, we are going to try to coordinate these year-end messages, so as not to completely inundate you or give you multiple pieces of guidance. We want to try to put that together. And we're going to be, well, we sent out that confirmation on the change date. That went today, I think, I saw that. Questions on those? Now, in a normal month, we're not going to wait till the 24th to close. If everything is working the way we think, next month, we're going to be closer to the 15th. And really, ultimately, we want to get back to around the 10th or somewhere like that, so that these things, these things are more current in terms of reporting. Ongoing activities, we have commenced the HR payroll business process redesign. It's kicked off on March 31. This is going to impact everybody in one way or another, because it's the, not only how we should be doing HR and payroll going forward, but where should we be doing it? What part of the university, what part of departments or schools or combined service centers or pods or geographic areas or whatever it might be, how should it be working? How should it be staffed? How should the processes be set up? This is really important because it covers all the different aspects, what we call talent management in terms of bringing in new individuals, of course, employee benefits, employee payroll activities, any kinds of things that have to do with the whole HR and payroll combination. This is being jointly run between HR and the payroll services, which is part of the University Controller's Office. Vivian Fernandez is one project champion here. Richard Axe, the VP for Finance, is the other one. And Michelle Noran and I remain the executive sponsors for this project as well. Starting April 18, beginning the validation workshops to understand the current state processes. The team here is from Ernst &amp; Young, and they will be coming around to every part of the university to make sure we know what is being done now, and then how should it be designed forward. This is going to lead to a new HR payroll system, but we really want to get the business processes and where it's done, done first. That's the same thing we're doing on the student service, student information side, get that done first, and really have it set up to be a good, a good project, probably starting next calendar year. And on financial planning and budgeting, every Responsibility Center and Chancellor area is different. These are our general, our general dates. Hyperion has been active for some time, and we've got, I know, a lot of activity going on in there. May 18 is when we need that in there, so that we have time to work with the Chancellor's offices to make sure that it all makes sense, it balances out. And then, as usual for us, we wait until the legislature tells us what our appropriation is going to be, and hope that it stays the way we planned it, so that we don't have to change it. But in the meantime, we have contingent, do contingency planning with Larry and his colleagues, in case it does. So some of the things that we've mapped in FY '16 actuals, using the new chart of accounts and '17 budgets into the system for reference. We're going to be automatically calculating and populating the salary, the fringe benefit charges. So that's not something that you have to do. It'll come in automatically. And then there'll be some other pieces, there are some other tools that have already been worked out for those of you who use Hyperion in order to, you know, use inflators and other factors to take one budget from one year to another. And as usual, I want to refer you to the Cornerstone website. It is where we post everything, and we're going to be, have we started the alert box? Okay, we're going to be starting a, putting a box right on the front page that has the daily activity. Because, I mean, these things, things change every day, and rather than inundate everybody with emails, we're going to be trying to direct people to go there to see what current state is. The other thing I highly recommend, if you're not on the rainless serve and you're a grant administrator, do so, because that really is our best communication vehicle on grant issues right now. So, again, thank you for your patience as we get through this. I really do see that, you know, see the light ahead of us, but it's dark right now. And those of you who heard me before refer to the valley of despair before you get to the mountain of hope, and this valley is just a little deeper than anybody wanted it to be, and darker. So, and I would like it not to have been that way, but we push forward. Who's going to win the Derby? What? Oh. All right, we'll stick around if anybody wants to come up and chat with one of the experts, which is everybody but me. And thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your questions. Thank you for your support. And see you again soon. Thanks.